जीवूड़ा माटलाडे देवूड़ा शक्तिमंतुड़ा निक स्तोत्राल तनरी हालेलुया हालेलुया रिसामियमलो मणमज्जनुन्ना मरि देवजनलो नीचे जेवरावगरोच्चि मरि प्रारंभ प्राधनचेवलस्थिगा क्वार्तावुन्ना ग्लोरी हालेलुया हालेलुया देवा निक स्तोत्रमल तनरी स्तोत्रमल स्तोत्रमल नायना
परिषद रुवैना मातंडी प्रामगलिन ये सया नी गणमैन नामान्न की वंदनालु स्तोत्राल चलिस्तो नाम ई रात्रि कालो समयमलो नायना नी भोजनभू बलचुट्टू नी पिल्ललु वलीभा मकलवले चेरिनट्लिगा मीमे कड़की चेरियनाम प्रभ्य इनकनु रावलिस्ना बिटल अंदर निकोड़ त्यूसकुन डंडी नायना नु नातो मातो माटलाडाली तनरी ममलनु बलपरछाली तनरी आया जिगो नायना मीमु कुडिकाइना यडमकाइना तोलिगुपोकुनुनट्लु सत्य स्वरूपेगु नी परिषद आत्मद्वारा ममलन नडिपिन्छाल नायना नीमेदे आधारपड्डामु तनरी नी वाइपे चोस्नाम प्रभ्य नी अक्क सहायिंग करुकु चोस्नाम प्रभ्य नी आत्मनिम्पुदलकरुकु आशिगुनी नाम प्रभ्य कनिकरिंचन्डी नायना क्रोबचूपिन्छन्डी प्रभ्य स्थानिक संगमु इनो रोजलिगा ई कुडिकनिमितमाई प्रादिस्तुनार नायना अंदर प्राधन मेरा आलकिंचि इनो वैला किलोमीटर लिंचि नी दासुनी मामाज्जलो त्यूसकु चारु प्रभ्य संगक्षममु करुके वारी निन्नेलो बेटुकुनी मेरि माटलाडतन्ना प्रति अम्शमुनु बट्टी नी कॉठलगलदिस्तोत्रालु वंदनालु चलिस्तो नाम प्रभ्य ई रात्रि कोड़ा नायना मरोक्सारी मीरे मामाज्जलो निकी दिगिरंडी नायना नी अग्रिस्तम्म मामाज्जलो गुंडुनुगाकन नायना संगानिकी मेलकर्मगा नी परिषद आत्मकार्यानी जरिजित्युमनी मरोक्सारी ममलनु मी चेतुल्लु पेटुकुन्डनाम प्रभ्य आया जिगो नायना नी बलमैन सहायम दायिचेसी मीरे महिमागनता प्रभावालु पंदंडी पाटलद्वारा मेरि महिमु पंदंडी वाक्यद्वारा मेरि माटलाडंडी नायना निविशालो नी गप्पा सहायमुनु माग दायिचेसी नी आत्मतो ममलनु अभिषेकिंचि नडिपिन्छमनी प्रभ्य नायना येसु कृष्टनुमी नाममलो प्राधन जे सड़ुतुनामु आमे
रिसामियमलो मरि साल्यमगरोच्चि मुंदिगा कास्तुतिया राधन केतन्ने पाडिविन्न पेंचवल्स्थिगा क्वार्तावुन्ना मरालगे माइकल दगरकोड़ा मरि बेडल रण्डी ई मधटे केतन पाडतावुन्डुन्डगा मरि लेचिनल बडिगिना रिप्रति स्वहोदरी मरि स्वहोदरु मरि लेचिनल बड़ी देवुन्ना मणमण महिम पर्दो माइकल दगरक रागलिन बेडलु मेर मुंदुकु रण्डी चेकहल रिंदु वंदल याबी तुम्दो पाटिस्मल पाड्दो स्तुति गीतमे पाडना संगीतमे पाडना पाड्दो चगर चप्पु कुट्टु पाडना स्तुति गीतमे पाडना
संगीतमे पाडना स्तुति संगीतमे पाडना संगीतमे पाडना स्तुति संगीतमे पाडना संगीतमे पाडना स्तुति संगीतमे पाडना स्तुति गीतमे पाडना
देवुन स्तोत्राम हालेलुया अन्नचिदी मरि सामियमलो पन्नी पाटलमणु एम्दो जुने पाडाले नेमलेदो ओक्काल मित्तन्चो गरिते पाडतावुन्ना पुड़कुड़ा मिन्नेल बड़ी देवुन स्तुतिंचोच्चु आराधन चेच्चु मरि सामियमलो मणमज्जनुन्ना मरि स्वहोदरु मरि एलियादरीगरोच्चि मरोक्का पाट पाडवल्स्थिगा क्वार्तावुन्ना मरि तरवात एस्तेरीगरु मरि तरवात मोशेगर देवजल मोशेगरु मरोकर तरवात ओकरोच्चि मरि पाडवल्स्थिगा क्वार्तावुन्ना यंतईन नम्मदगिना देवुड़हू येसया यंतगनिनु पोगडिना चालदय्या येसया यंतईन नम्मदगिना देवुड़हू येसया यंतगनिनु पोगडिना चालदय्या येसया आचर्य कार्यमुलु चेयुवाड़वो अवसरमुलु तीर्चि नडिपिन्छुवाड़वो आचर्य कार्यमुलु चेयुवाड़वो अवसरमुलु तीर्चि नडिपिन्छुवाड़वो येसया नी प्रेम यंतकोप्पदि येसया नी प्रेमसाठीले निदि येसया नी प्रेम यंतकोप्पदि येसया नी प्रेमसाठीले निदि यंतईन नम्मदगिना देवुड़हू येसया यंतगनिनु पोगडिना चालदय्या येसया वाक्तानु चेस्तिना नम्मदगिना देवड़ो येस्कितिलो नायना निन्नु विणिच्चि पेट्टड़ो वाक्तानु चेस्तिना नम्मदगिना देवड़ो येस्कितिलो नायना निन्नु विणिच्चि पेट्टड़ो येहो वानु आस्रयुंचु वारकी येमेलु कोदुवै युंददु येहो वानु आस्रयुंचु वारकी येमेलु कोदुवै युंददु येसया नी प्रेम यंतकोप्पदि येसया नी प्रेमसाठीले निदि येसया नी प्रेम यंतकोप्पदि येसया नी प्रेमसाठीले निदि यंतईन नम्मदगिना देवुड़हू येसया यंतगनिनु पोगडिना चालदय्या येसया आकाश पक्षलु वित्तमु कोयवो वाटिनि पोसिंचु देवुड़हू नीवो आकाश पक्षलु वित्तमु कोयवो वाटिनि पोसिंचु देवुड़हू नीवो आनाडु येलयानु पोसिंचिनावो ईराडु नीवदुन पोसिंचुचुन्नावो आनाडु येलयानु पोसिंचिनावो ईराडु नीवदुन पोसिंचुचुन्नावो येसया नी प्रेम यंतकोप्पदि येसया नी प्रेमसाठीले निदि येसया नी प्रेम यंतकोप्पदि येसया नी प्रेमसाठीले निदि यंतईन नम्मदगिना देवुड़हू येसया यंतगनिनु पोगडिना चालदय्या येसया नी प्रेमचूपिंचि आधरिंचिनावो नाकोरतलन्नी तलगिंचिनावो नी प्रेमचूपिंचि आधरिंचिनावो नाकोरतलन्नी तलगिंचिनावो कस्तकाल मंगुना तोडयुंडिनावो विडुवकयड़ा भायका रुपचूपिनावो कस्तकाल मंगुना तोडयुंडिनावो विडुवकयड़ा भायका रुपचूपिनावो येसया नी प्रेम यंतकोप्पदि येसया नी प्रेमसाठीले निदि येसया नी प्रेम यंतकोप्पदि येसया नी प्रेमसाठीले निदि यंतईन नम्मदगिना देवुड़हू येसया यंतगनिनु पोगडिना चालदय्या येसया यंतईन नम्मदगिना देवुड़हू येसया यंतगनिनु पोगडिना चालदय्या येसया आचर्य कार्यमुलु चेयुवाड़वो अवसरमुलु तीर्चि नडिपिन्छुवाड़वो आचर्य कार्यमुलु चेयुवाड़वो अवसरमुलु तीर्चि नडिपिन्छुवाड़वो येसया नी प्रेम यंतकोप्पदि येसया नी प्रेमसाठीले निदि येसया नी प्रेम यंतकोप्पदि येसया नी प्रेमसाठीले निदि हालेलुया
नाविस्वासमुनकु कत्तयाईना येसयतो नाविस्वासमुनकु कत्तयाईना येसयतो सिलुगा चिकुलु पेट्टे पापमुलु विरची सिलुगा चिकुलु पेट्टे पापमुलु विरची आत्मय बलमुनु पंडुकुनी नवकिक शक्तुलु निदुरिंतुनु इनका आत्मय बलमुनु पंडुकुनी नवकिक शक्तुलु निदुरिंतुनु देवुनी शक्ति संपन्नततो प्रातारमुलनु दातिदनु निचयमुगा सत्रकोटलु नीनु जयिंचेदनु देवुनी शक्ति संपन्नततो प्रातारमुलनु दातिदनु निचयमुगा सत्रकोटलु नीनु जयिंचेदनु नाविस्वासमुनकु कत्तयाईना येसयतो नूटनमैना मार्गमुलो कट्रिल्ला कुंडा नडिपिन्छुनु नवनूटनमैना मार्गमुलो कट्रिल्ला कुंडा नडिपिन्छुनु देवुनी करुना आस्तमु नाचे पट्टुकुनी निचयमुगा महिमलो निकी नन्नु चेचुनी देवुनी करुना आस्तमु नाचे पट्टुकुनी निचयमुगा महिमलो निकी नन्नु चेचुनी नाविस्वासमुनकु कत्तयाईना येसयतो सृष्टमैना भुमानमुकै समर्पनकलिगी जीविंतुनु सृष्टमैना भुमानमुकै समर्पनकलिगी जीविंतुनु देवुनी सन्निदि प्रभावमु नापै प्रचरिंचेनु निचयमुगा मरि सृष्टमैना सियोनुलो निलुपुमु देवुनी सन्निदि प्रभावमु नापै प्रचरिंचेनु निचयमुगा मरि सृष्टमैना सियोनुलो निलुपुमु नाविस्वासमुनकु कत्तयाईना येसयतो सिलुगा चिकुलु पेट्टे पापमुलु विरची सिलुगा चिकुलु पेट्टे पापमुलु विरची
देवुन किस्तोत्राम पाटल पुस्तुकुन चिन्नोट यान्बायु मुड़पाटा यंतु महानीमु नी प्रेम नाये सया स्तोत्राम हालेलुया यंतु महानीयमु नी प्रेम नाये सया यंतु महानीयमु नी प्रेम नाये सया यंतु महानीयमु नी प्रेम नाये सया नी प्रेम पलुकुनु दया रसमुलु आहा आहा नी प्रेम पलुकुनु दया रसमुलु नाहुदयमंता निंदेनु आनंदमुतु पंगेनु नाहुदयमंता निंदेनु आनंदमुतु पंगेनु आहा यंतु महानीयमु नी प्रेम नाये सया स्तोत्राम हालेलुया नी चल्लानी चुपुलु करिगिंचेनु नाप्रतुकुनु नी चल्लानी चुपुलु करिगिंचेनु नाप्रतुकुनु नामनसुनु माचेनु नातनुए पुलखिंचेनु नामनसुनु माचेनु नातनुए पुलखिंचेनु यंतु महानीयमु नी प्रेम नाये सया यंतु महानीयमु नी प्रेम नाये सया नीतो साहवासमु ना खिचे नी रूपमु नीतो साहवासमु ना खिचे नी रूपमु अदि ना जीविता गम्यमु इकांता संतोषमु अदि ना जीविता गम्यमु इकांता संतोषमु ना जीवितमुनीतो यंतु महानीयमु नी प्रेमना ये सैया यंतु महानीयमु नी प्रेमना ये सैया आहा यंतु महानीयमु नी प्रेमना ये सैया नी प्रेमना ये सैया रिक्षेवरगा मनमज्जन नमरी देवजनल्यो जोशी कुमार गरवची मरका पाडळी वेणी पेंचवाल्सन दिग्गोरता उन्न देवन किस्तोत्रो गलगुनु गाक एटिका चिपता मंदर कोडा हॅलेलुया मरी देवजनल्यो मरकोथिन मिशाल्लो मरी मनमज्ज ग्राब आतन नरु रिरात्री मनमंदर कोडा देवनी वाक्य विन्यतान के मनमंदर कोडा इदर चूसता उन्न रे वर वच्चे लोपलो मनमंदर कोडा चकगा मरी देवनी एका सन्निदिनी मनमु एका रंगानु मनसत्तपर चोरस्वारंगा उन्न देवन किस्तोत्रो गलगुनु गाक हॅलेलुया मरी नेपुर चिपता उन्न नेंटेन्टे मरी इकड़ा पाठ पाठतन पुरु संगमंता कोडा चकगा केलीसी पाडल देवन किस्तोत्रो जपन अंदर कोडा मरी प्रदर पाठ पाठ पात पाट अंदर गोचन पाटे कदा हॅलेलुया अंदर पाटता उन्न पुरु अदि चाला मरी यंतु अदि मौदरींगा उन्न तुंदे वक्का चक्कड़ अद्भुत मेरो वातावनन मन मरी केली गुण गलगुता देवन किस्तोत्रो गलगुनु गाक पात पाट मरी पाडल आश्वर्त तुंद कलुवरी गिरणुन्नी पिलचिनना ये सुने पाट पाटताम इदर लो कॉरस उन्त दे मरी हॅलेलुया हॅलेलुया नी कॉरसु मनमंदर कोडा पाडल नी आश्वर्त तुंद हॅलेलुया हल्ले एफ एफ हॅलेलुया 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 कलुवरी गिरिनुन्नी पिलचिनना ये सु सिलुवा मरणमुनु पिलचिनना ये सु अंदर पाटताम कलुवरी गिरिनुन्नी पिलचिनना ये सु सिलुवा मरणमुनु पिलचिनना ये सु अंदर पाट हॅलेलुया कट्या चापलु गुड पाट हॅलेलुया 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 मधुर प्रेमनु चूपिंचिना पै मदि निनम मदि चेकूचिनावु मधुर प्रेमनु चूपिंचिना पै मदि निनम मदि चेकूचिनावु मारणी ये सुराजा मरुवनु निन्नु देव मारणी ये सुराजा मरुवनु निन्नु देव अंदर पाटताम हॅलेलुया गोरी हॅलेलुया 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 कलुवरी गिरिनुन्नी पिलचिनना ये सु सिलुवा मरणमुनु पिलचिनना ये सु कलुवरी गिरिनुन्नी पिलचिनना ये सु सिलुवा मरणमुनु पिलचिनना ये सु वेदरी प्रतुकुन ने चदरी पोगा वेदकी दरी चेट्टी समकूचिनावु वेदरी प्रतुकुन ने चदरी पोगा वेदकी दरी चेट्टी समकूचिनावु वेदनलु पापीनावा विडुवनु निन्नु देव वेदनलु पापीनावा विडुवनु निन्नु देव अंदर पाटताम गोरी हॅलेलुया 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 मत्यमईना ईहलोकमंदे नित्यरात्यमु ना कोसगिनावु मत्यमईना ईहलोकमंदे नित्यरात्यमु ना कोसगिनावु शक्तिगलनी नामंबु निरतम पक्तितोने प्रकटिंतु देव शक्तिगलनी नामंबु निरतम पक्तितोने प्रकटिंतु देव हॅलेलुया गोरी हॅलेलुया 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 कलुवरी गिरिनुन्नी पिलचिनना ये सु सिलुवा मरणमुनु पिलचिनना ये सु कलुवरी गिरिनुन्नी पिलचिनना ये सु सिलुवा मरणमुनु पिलचिनना ये सु अंदर पाटताम हॅलेलुया 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 प्रेस लॉर्ड दयचेसी रामगिरगट्टु चिन्दन सहोदरी लक्षार लेत्नल्पुरण्डी रामगिरगट्टु चिन्दन सहोदरी रंद्रकोड़ लक्षारी वनकेटल्या उन्ची वाटल्या काढकर रावलं तिली जास्त सारे निगड़ा वर लेरू रंद्रकोड़ वनकेटल्या उन्ची वाटल्या लेरू परिषद नामानु महिमा कलगुनु गाक हॅलेलुया मरी कोड वच्चीना मियंदरकी कोड यसु कृष्टु शक्तिगलनामुलो नाहदी पोरकमेन वंदनाल तिली जास्त उन्न अलागे मुख्य गमरी ना तोडी देव सावकलु मरी कोणाटु डोडी सावकल अंदरगी अलागे ब्रदर जोशी गरकी प्रति वकरकी मरी यसु कृष्टु नामुलो नायक गवर्धी पोरकमेन वंदनाल तिली जास्त ना देवड़ तनयक अद्भुत रुपचयता प्रेमना बट्टी ईच्चे वर दिनाल्लो मनकिस्तन यवकाश अनुर्बट्टी कोड देवन किस्तु तुलचलिस्तन नानु पीलारा मरी लेनु लाकेडिस्ते उन्न वडू तिला गेडशड़ अंत अनुकमरी मानसांगमो बोश शाटलाड देम अनुकुंतन नेरू आयुवर जुत्ते जनल अकड़ कुच पेटल कोड मानतिलीदु निलाड स्पेशल मीटिंग्स उस्ते करका मरी चाला मरी दन्यम अंत अंते मरी एंट निलक्ष्म अंतमो दन्यम अंत मानतिलीदु यावर कुपल्ला अलकुंटे पनुल लेनु लेवर लेरू अंडकुंडी निग्गा निलअडुकुंतन एंटेन्टे देवड़ ईच्चे अवकाश नेटला उपयोगिंस्कवालो मरी तिलीट्ले देमो चाला मंदिक अनुकुंतन नेरू देवड़ ईच्चे वक्का अवकाश निसंगाने मरी निच्यांगा आयोका संदर्भमलो देवड़ अवकाश मनकिस्तन पुरु आ समयान उपयोगिंस्कुनी आ रोज देवड़ ईच्चे ना वाक्य अनेदि मन जीवितोलो मरी स्वेखरिंस्कल गिते अदि माल्लू यंतो कोप कार्यान्नी चास्ता दने विष्यान्नी चाला मंदिक ग्रहिंस्चले देमो अनुकुंतन नेरू सरे अदि वारी वक्का विज्ञतके ओढिलास्ता उन्न देवन किस्तोत्रो एदिकेंटे यावर नकोडा यावर ब्रतमलाडे रोजलिवी कादाटा वोदु अलागे वर तोर कोड ब्रतमलाडिंस्कुने परिषद कादाटा काबट्टे पीलारा मन क्रीलु बट्टे मन वोदुआ लापोदु कोकटा अनेदि अदि मरी मन क्रीले मनकी प्रसक्ष बरस्ता उन्न सरे मंच दे मरी एक समयालो वच्चीन वर अंदन बट्टी नी देवनातो स्तोतिस्तन यंतु मंदिकोडा महिम यत्तपाटलो उन्टे यत्तु कोप कुंतदे यंतु मंदिक वच्चीन ओल्ली यंतु मंदिक ओशा साकमंद उच्चूंटारे मनोलिका साकमंद गुरा लेदो आइदे ई साकमंदलो कोडा मरी यंतु मंदिलो यंतु मंदिक यत्तपाटलो उन्टार अनेदि चाला पद्ध प्रश्न येना पद्धा प्रश्न नारिसंगा यंतु मंदिक मानसांगवनी चिकनक यत्तपाटला गिल्पोते असलेकमा ना परिषद माहल उन्तदे तगड़ा देवन किस्तोत्रो करुनक हॅलेलुया सरे मंच दे प्रियास देवन बेडलार सरे वच्चीन ओल्ली ना साको उपयोगिंस्कुनी देवनी वाक्य बाग विन्यती मरी चकगा मरी जानकोमा गर मन मध्य करावलो चाला संतोषकरण एदिकेंटे रोजलो मुद्रलो मरमाल चिप्पे वाल चाला मंदिनार गानी संगवलो लूसकल चिप्पे वाल मात्र यावर लेरू चाला तोक्कू मंदिनार संग क्षमा मेंटी उज्ज्वयो कुडकलन चाला मंदिक बेटुंनार अंडी असल उज्ज्वयो कोट मेंट दिलसा प्रवक्त चिप्पे ना उज्ज्वयो मेंट दिलसा विश्वासलो पापलन्नी बैठीक पौडमे उज्ज्वयो अंत उज्ज्वयो वच्चीन पुरे विश्वासलो पापलन्नी लॉपल लॉपल दाचकुन पापलन्नी बैठीक पोतैटा अदि उज्ज्वयो देवन किस्तोत्रो करिका मुद्रल चिप्पे ना बुड़ी गिर गंतुले स्थे उद्दिरेक बडिते अदि उज्ज्वयो मन चाला मंदिन अनुकुंतनार कादु जानकोमा गर कोटलो मनंजूसे देंटर अंडे निसमयन उज्ज्वयो जोस्तन चाला मंदिक एक जीविताल बैठ पडता उन्न वाक्य विलिगलो मरी चकगा चिकटिकोणाल अकड़ अकड़ ते उन्टुनायो देवड़ तन वाक्य द्वारा मरी संगलतो देवड़ माटलाड तुनाडु अनेकड़ा गेलना कोड विदंगा माटलाडु नी चूस्तुन मरी यानवलो निन्न वाक्य चिप्पे ना पुरु सरिका यानवलो येन जरिगिंदो अच्छे पडायन अगड़ा देवन किस्तोत्रो आत्मस्यावन अलागा आटंग परिचिंदे स्वर्थ जरक्कुन अलाग चेसिंदे पीलार आइकत लाकुन अलाग चेसिंदे क्रियरगायन चकगा चिप्पे नी नारी गेव विष्याल जपन देवड़ गण्य दिलस कदा देवड़ अन्नी चूस्तन आडु ने पासल उज्ज्वय बेट्टी ने नो वच्चीन ओल्ली मासांगवल अलाग जपन नद कानुगुल गोस्त जपन मादेकरसलो मादेकरस ओंकर कुंतनार जपन लद मायोल उंकुला कुंतनार जपन माविश्वासले राजा आत्न नीडीपित्तनार जपन वरकी जपन असल येन कान्यमंड परिषद दात्मा येदि मनकिस्तन आड़ायन की दिलस आयन की येदि वालो मनकिस्तन काबट्टी पीला कच्चेतेंगा देवड़ आरीतिका माटलाडे सज्जी उडन देवड़ मानस रोधियाल गरिगिन देवड़ गाबट्टी अप्पनसरिगायन माटलाड उसन विष्याले माटलाड तडानी नी नमुतन नानी रोज कोड इकड़ा उन्न वार तो गानी आन्ले लो चूसे वार तो गानी कच्चेतेंगा देवड़ अवसरमन विष्याले माटलाड बोतुनाडु अन्नी नमुतन देवन की महिमा कलगुनु गाक हॅलेलुया रेप यदा विदिगमली मनकी आराधन उन्तुंदी इनिकंटलकी इनिकंटलकी इनेबुदी गंटल अक इन्हेबुदी गंटलकी अंधना इम्दिनार का प्रारंभ बेत्तरो तोबुदिगान ला प्रारंभ बेत्तरो मी गनवस्नो इन्हिकंटल रावल अंदर इम्दिक अल्लाह अंदर एकड़ उन्नाली हल्ले लुया मरि कच्चितंगा आराधन मामुल गाने उन्टदे आराधन ले मी मार्पुले दु तरवादा मु करेक्टिगमल्ला मूड गंटलकी मल्ली एम एम अंडदे यूथ मीटिंग उन्टदे यूथ अंदरगी जपन्डी एवर मिस्स आवद्दु अछितंगा यूथ अंदर तप्पुका रावलसिंदगी ने कोर्तुन्ना इवे टाइमिंग सिंगे माट्स बड़ो वेलकम सर वेलकम ब्रदर गॉड ब्लेस यू जोशी गरु कोड़ा बाइक रावस्नो कोर्तुन्ना गर्बेश मरि ई समयालो मान मान जूसन अपुडो मरि जानकोमा गरु मान मध्यिकरावलन चाला संतोषकरम ने विष्ण मरि जांबिया देशमुन निचि इन्तु मंदिक मानल चालीगर वच्छिना मरि आयन आदेशमे बोश आयन किरीको सम्मान मंदिक बोश आयन यक्का यल्नरीना करिका मरि आरीतिका उन्टुना परिस्थितोलो मरि देवड़ मरि इविदंगा तिस्करावडो गोप संतोषकरम ने विष्ण मरि समयालो मरायन मान मध्यिकरावडो ने देवनान्तो स्तुतिस्ता उन्ना अलागे मरि कोड़ा मरि वाक्य तच्चुमा छेडनकी मरि तेजा ने कुमारण रावडो चाला गोप विष्ण मधि इधिकैंडे गतोमलो चाला गोरमाइन एट वंडी कंडीशनलो मरि मरणें चालसन परिस्थित केलन एट वंडी मरा कुमारणी देवड़ तिरिगिमल्ला लेवर नित्ती इविदंगा ट्रांसलेट छेडन देवड़ एन वाड़ुकुटनाडु मरि वाड़ीकी नाहोदीपोरकमैन वंदनाल तिली जस्तन्ना माय स्पेशल गिडिंग्स तू ब्रदर जानकोमा फ्रॉम जांबिया यार वेलकम यू ब्रदर थैंक यू वेरी मच फॉर योर मिनिस्ट्री इन द अंदर प्रदेश करिका मरि चक्का देवड़ मंचिगा नडुपिस्ता उन्नाडु बिरंद्र आश्ता उन्नार वाक्य वननकी हल्ले लुया काबट्टी समयालो मरि ई समयान कप जप्तुन्नानु अंदर कोड़ा वाक्य जागर्थका विनालन ने कोर्तुन्ना गॉड ब्लेस यू देवड़ मामल दिविंचुनु गाक नवाई इनवाइट ब्रदर जानकोमा फ्रॉम जांबिया ही विल कम परवर्ड एंड टेक डी सर्विस एंड शेयर डी वर्ड ऑफ गॉड विद हिस चर्च और डी ब्राइड एंड आई रिक्वेस्ट ब्रदर तेजस विल कम एंड ट्रांसलेट फॉर इट स्तोत्रम हल्ले लुया गॉड ब्लेस यू आई ग्रेट यू इन डी नाम ऑफ डी लोड यीसस क्राइस्ट देवड़ मामल दिविंचुनु गाक प्रभु यसु कृष्टु नामुलो मियंद्रकी मायकशो बाबी वंदनाल तिली जस्न उन्नानु ये थैंक गॉड टुनाइट फॉर गिविंग अस थिस टाइम अगेन मरोक सारी मी मज्जलो उन्नाडनकी देवड़ माकिचन अवकाश न बट्टी देवनान्तो कानो स्तुतिस्तु महिम परसु आयन गान परसु उन्नानु आई रिमेंबर डेट अफ्यू एगो आई वास ये नाकु गुर्तोस्तो उन्दी कुन्नी संस्थल क्रितम मी मज्जलो ने नो उन्नाम मान दी जरिगिंदी वाले तू थैंक पास्टर कुमार प्रत्येकिंगा पास्टर गरकी अरुण कुमार गरकी प्रत्येकिंगा मायका प्रचयक मान वंदनाल तिली जस्न उन्नाम हविंग अलाउड मी तू संडी अगेन इकड़ा मरोक सारी नेलबड्डनकी वार माकिचन अवकाश न बट्टी वार के प्रत्येकिंगा वार के वंदनाल तिली जस्न गॉड ब्लेस यू सर देवड़ मामल दिविंचुनु गाक आयगरु आलो सोलेट तू थैंक पास्टर्स अलागे इकड़ा चाला मंदिक सावकल कोड़ा मान मज्जलो उन्नार नमुतन्ना दे आर आदर्स आई एम शुअ सम्वेय इनका चाला मंदिक दावस्यावकल चाला मंदिक मान मज्जलो उन्नाडमो ने नमुतन्ना उन्नानु देवड़ वरंदर दिविंचुनु गाक आई ब्रिच्ड सम ऑफ देम इन डी चर्च इकड़ा नकोंतमंदी वार यक्का सांगालो ने नो वाक्य बोधिंचुन जरिगिंद अकड़ वेरी गुड मैन ऑफ गॉड चाला मंच देवन यक्का मनुष्यलो गवारु कन्पिस्त उन्नार वार उन्टू उन्नार कंटिन्यू वर्किंग डी वे यू आर वर्किंग मेर अलागेते देवन यक्का परिचर जरिगिस्तनार अधेविदंगा परिचर निकोन सागिंचलनी मियंद्रकी कोर्ता उन्ना आज वी हेड लास्ट नाइट गत रात्रि मान विन्नटुगा देर इस पावर इन यूनिटी मानकी एम उन्नटे आइक्कत ले गोपा शक्ति उन्नदी सो आई एड यू अंधके मी माल ब्रतमाल्ता उन्नानु तू डू व्हाट अरुण एंड योर हर डिड तू मोजेस आ मोश्य पटला आहरोनु हूरु ने वार अलागेते वारु व्यवहरिंचारो अधेविदंगा मेरु कोड़ा उन्डालनी ने नो आश्पर्त उन्ना ड्यूरिंग डी वॉर आयक्का युद्ध समयालो मोजेस सट ओन डी माउंटेन मोश्य पर्वतम मिदा कोणम मिदा आयन कोच्चिन उन्नापुडो जॉश्यूआ फाइटिंग इन डी वाले लिप एस डी आर्मी कमांडर अकड़ यहोश्वयमो अकड़ लोयलो जरुगुतन युद्धमलो जरिगुस्तन युद्धानकी साइन्यानकी अधिकारीका व्यवहरिस्तनाडु एंड व्हेनेवर मोजेस रेज इस हाथ यक्करते ई समयाले ते मोश्य तन चेतल पाइकेट्टी उन्छिता उन्नाडो डाउन इन डी वाले अकड़ लोयलो सम्थिंग वाज हैपनिंग येदो जरुगता उन्दा अकड़ इसरायलो अकड़ जेम्पुंड कुन्ने उन्नार जेम्पु जेम्पु वारु पुंड कुन्ने उन्ना बट व्हेन यू गो टायर कान यपरैते वार अलिस्पयारो पाइना इस अन ह्यूमन बीइंग गेस टायर अका मनुष्य निका चाला मंदिक अलिस्पयान्टी का तड़कोड़ा वालिसी पाइन अपुडो एंड यू ड्रॉप इस हाथ अतर चेतल किंदक दिंचिन अपुडो देन इसरा बिगन लूजिंग 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 अपुड इसरायलम इन जस्न अंडे तन यक्का युद्धान अकड़ वोड़ीपोतु 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 उन्दी अंट्यू आहरोन की अका प्रत्यक्षित बैलपाट्टु वच्छन्त वरक व्हेन दिस मैन रेज इस इस हाथ अकड़ अतन एम अनुच्च अंडे ई मनुष्य यपरैते तन चेतल पाइकेट्टुनाडो वारु अक्का युद्धान वारु जेम्पुंड कुन्नार व्हेन दिस मैन ड्रॉप डी हाथ ई मनुष्य यपरैते चेतल दिंचितनाडो वारु अकड़ वोड़ीपोतु उन्ना सो व्हाट यू डिड अंधके अतर इन जस्त अंडे ये तोड डी हर अतरु तन आयक्का सहोदरीना होरु कोड़ा चिप्पा डिमनटे होल्ड इस हाथ अप अतन चेतन पाइकेट्टी मान नेलबड्डाली एंड देन ही अल्सो टूप डी हाथ अतन तो पाटो इतरु कोड़ा तन चेतन पाइकेट्टी नेलबड्डा बट दे डिन स्टॉप डेयर कान अकड़ तो वारु सरिपेट कोले देन दे टूक एस्टोन वार इन जस्त अंडे अका बंदन देस्कुनी एंड पुट इट फॉर डी चेयर आ बंदन अका कुर्चीगा तैयार चेसे अतन कुर्चोटानकी आ बंदन अकड़ तमकुर्चारो सो नाउ अंधकी पुडो तू हाथ अप ई रेंडु चेतल ने पाइकेबेटारो सिटिंग ओन डी चेयर आ मोश्य अमो बंदमेर कुर्चिन उन्नाडो डी बाइबो सेज बाइबो चप्त उन्दी दे फोर्ड फ्रॉम मॉर्निंग तू इवनिंग आ बाइबो एम चप्त अंडे उदेकालम नुण्डी सायंकालम अस्तमयम वरकु कोड़ा वारु युद्धम जरिगिस्तन उन्नारो अमेन अंडा डेट रिवेलेशन आ बैलपाट्ट ने दी वी नीड डिट ये इनांद्र कच्चितंगा ईरोज यक्कर अवसरमय उन्नटे मान अंद्र राष्ट्रोलो चाला अवसरमय उन्दी होल्ड अप डी हाथ ऑफ डी एल्डर्स ईरोज मानमय चेलनटे ई वर्तमानमलो पेदलगा व्यवहरिस्तन नट वंडी अट वंडी वार यक्का चेतलो मानमु कोड़ा पाइकेपेट्टी लेचिपट्टुन उन्डाल बाय डी वे इनको विष्ण व्हाट डस डेस्टोन मी असलो बंदन अकर्तम एम अटी व्हेन यीसस क्राइस्ट वाज रिसरेक्टिंग ओन सैली संडे मॉर्निंग यसु कृष्टु आदिवारम नाडु उदेकालम ना यपरैते तन तिरिगिले स्ता उन्नाडो एन गॉड सेंट एन एंजल फ्रॉम हेवन अपुड देवड़ परलोकम नुण्डी अका दोतन पंपिच्छडा आयन यू रोड डी पर्सन डिड यू रोड डवे डेस्टोन फ्रॉम डी ग्रेड मट्टमुंडी गा आ दोत चेन जस्न अंडे आ बंदन तोलगिंचिंदे व्हेन यू रोड इट डवे आ बंदन यपरैते तोलगिंचिंदो देन डी एंजल अपुड आ दोत सट ओन डी स्टोन आ दोत आ बंदमेर कुर्चुंड इन ओडर फॉर यीसस क्राइस्ट तू कम आउट ऑफ डी ग्रेड तद्वारा दान केमी साद्रश्न चप्तुनाडंडे यसु कृष्टु आयक्का बंदन तोलगिंचितरवाता
We are going to worship.
You will not go to worship.
Hallelujah.
Hallelujah.
Yes, you are the problems.
What is the problem? Many problems.
Yes, you feel sick.
Many problems.
But the problems.
What is the problem?
We are not very big.
You have seen the problems. Many problems.
But when you believe.
When you believe.
When you repent.
When you repent.
When you feel the Holy Ghost.
When you feel the Holy Ghost.
When you are a real child of God.
When you are a real child of God.
When you are praising God.
When you are praising God.
When you are worshiping God.
When you are worshiping God.
You will notice this.
You have seen the problems.
Your troubles increase.
What is the problem? The problem is.
Problems increase.
Why?
And too some people say.
Why?
Why don't you go back from the church you came from? So I want to answer this question. Do believers suffer big problems?
Many problems.
Are you pastor Shalom? Is he the one?
Yeah.
God bless you.
Pastor Shalom.
I've seen you.
I've seen you.
Hallelujah.
Hallelujah.
Shall we pray?
Let us pray.
Heavenly Father, we come before you tonight in the name of the Lord Jesus Christ. Lord, your children are gathered here. They have not come, they have not left their homes, they have not left their work, their families, their business, whatever to come here, just to be seen. But they have come because they believe that in this place, they hear the word of God, they are encouraged, they are strengthened. And we have pastors who have come from around, bless them, Father. Now, tonight, I pray, Lord, speak something to them that will encourage them. If they feel discouraged, that will encourage them, strengthen them, and make them continue to march forward. Because the bride must not be going backwards, the bride must be going forward. In the name of Jesus Christ, I pray that, Lord, I move aside, brother Tijash, I pray that he moves aside. And Lord Jesus, come and take our places. These are your children, speak to them in Jesus Christ's name. Bless our pastor here, he's been with us, not only here, we've met in other churches, one of servants of God. Father, keep on encouraging him in Jesus Christ's name, amen.
Amen.
Shall we rise and read?
Let us read.
Three scriptures, then we sit.
Let us read.
We'll start with the book of Hebrews.
Let us read. Let us read.
Hallelujah. So read the three scriptures.
Let us read.
Then I'll just be referring to, sorry, referring to them.
Let us read.
Let's start with Hebrews chapter 12.
Let us read. Let us read.
In Hebrews 12.
Let us read.
We will read verses 5.
Let us read.
To 12.
Let us read.
Are we there?
Let us read.
Hebrews 12, 5 to 12.
Let us read.
Now, the Bible reads as follows.
The Bible says.
And you have forgotten the exhortation which speaketh unto you as unto children. My son despise not thou the chastening of the Lord, nor feign when thou attributest of him.
Why?
Six.
Aruch.
For whom the Lord loveth, he chastens, and scurges every sin whom he receives.
Why?
Seven. If you endure chastening, God dealeth with you as with the sons. For what side is he whom the Father chastens not? Eight. But if you be without chastisement, whereof all partakers, then you are pastors and not sons. Nine. Furthermore, we have had fathers of our flesh which corrected us, and we gave them reverence. Shall we not march rather in subjection unto the Father of spirits and live? Ten. They waited for a few days, chastened us after their own pleasure. But he, for our profit, that we might be partakers of his holiness. Now, no chastening for the present sin to be joyous, but grievous. Nevertheless, afterward, it yielded the peaceable fruit of righteousness unto them which are excised thereby. Twelve. Wherefore lift up the hands which hang down and the feeble knees. Please, let's take our seats.
Let us read.
We will read Matthew 5, while we are seated.
Let us read.
Matthew 5, verse 11.
Let us read.
Matthew 5, verse 11.
Let us read.
The Bible reads as follows.
The Bible says.
There I'll just read two verses, 11 and 12.
Let us read.
Blessed are you when men, blessed are you, when men shall revow you and persecute you, and shall say, O man of evil, against you falsely for my sake. Verse 12. Rejoice and be exceeding glad, for great is your reward in heaven, for so persecuted did they the prophets which were before you. How many have understood this scripture?
How many?
Say amen if you have understood.
Amen.
No, you haven't.
You haven't?
I can feel it.
You have seen.
So I'll read it again.
Let us read.
Jesus says.
Jesus Christ.
Matthew 5.
Let us read.
And verse 11.
Let us read.
Blessed are you.
Why?
When are you blessed?
Why?
Not when you have money.
Why?
Not when you have food.
Why?
Not when all churches are praising you. But blessed are you when men, not women, when men, brothers, men, other preachers, when men, are you with me?
Are you with me?
Shall revow you, revow, English means insult you.
Yes, sir.
When men.
Let us read.
English Bible, men.
Let us read.
Insult you.
Let us read.
The Bible says.
The Bible says.
If they insult you.
Why?
You are blessed. So blessed are you when men shall insult you and persecute you. One.
One.
Insult you.
Why?
You open your phone with their insults. Oh, India has received it. You open your phone.
Why?
You are persecuted.
Why?
Who are you?
Why?
You are useless.
Why?
You are nothing.
Why?
Who are you?
Why? Are you with me?
Now, the Bible says.
The Bible says.
When that happens. Rejoice.
Why?
When you read.
Why?
You raise your hand. Hallelujah, thank you Lord.
Hallelujah.
Because they are insulting me, thank you Lord, thank you Lord, they are persecuting me, thank you Lord. There's one more thing.
What?
Not only insult you.
Why?
Not only persecute you.
Why?
But also.
Why?
When they say, O manner of bad or evil things against you. Now, there is a very key word there.
Why?
When they do those things against you falsely. Meaning.
Why?
If they found you drinking. Doing something a Christian must not do, they can insult you, God says it's okay. What does the word falsely mean?
Why?
They don't have any good reason for hating you except their jealousy of you. They misunderstand you.
Why?
You want to stay with the word of God.
Why?
Why? When this happened.
Why?
Verse 12.
Let us read.
Rejoice and be exceeding glad, for great is your reward, not on earth but in heaven, for so persecuted did they the prophets which were before you. James, chapter 1.
Let us read.
No, what they are saying about me, it's too much, I'll stop worshiping. No, I'm going to sue them to court. I'll find a lawyer, Mr Gupta is a very good lawyer, sorry if you are Mr Gupta here. Did God go to court, say go to court, where we have read? When they insult you, persecute you. Falsely. What is the Bible say?
The Bible says.
Go to court. Go to them and say, look, I've come, you, you. What you do?
Why?
Thank God. James, chapter 1, verse 2.
Let us read.
Are you there?
Let us read.
My brethren encountered all joy when you fall into divers temptations. Knowing this, that the trying of your faith wicked patience. Four. But let patience have a perfect work, that you may be perfect and entire wanting nothing. Did you understand?
Why?
No, you did not.
Why?
Can I prove it? Yeah, I'm just trying to get you. It says.
Why?
Hallelujah.
Hallelujah.
Verse 2 said.
Let us read.
The trying of your faith, it says, verse 2. My brethren encountered all joy when you fall into divers temptations, that the Bible says, the Bible says temptations?
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
Read it. Now, here's a question.
What?
Is temptation a sin? Okay, maybe it's difficult. When you are tempted.
Why?
Do you repent? I knew you didn't understand.
Why?
How many know that Jesus Christ was tempted for forty days and nights? How many know that? Did you repent? Oh God, I'm sorry, I've been tempted, I've seen. You don't repent, I have seen many believers who were tempted, no, I'm repenting at temptation. What did the Bible say?
What?
Verse 2, James.
Let us read.
Can you read it, my brother?
Let us read.
This one. My brethren. Why, when you fall into many temptations? Why is the Bible say be joyful?
Why?
Because when you overcome temptations. And temptations come from the devil.
Why?
When you overcome them.
Why?
You have victory. Are we together?
Are you with me?
The Bible said.
The Bible says.
So now we can start for the next few minutes. Why do believers suffer so much? Because here.
Why?
When I was in Zambia.
Why?
Don't worry, I like sweating. Pastor, don't adjust cooler.
Why?
I heard that this, I don't know whether you heard this young man.
Why?
He was in the hospital.
Why?
He almost died.
Why?
Did you hear that?
Why?
Hallelujah.
Hallelujah.
And this pastor was always with him and so on. This man.
Why?
Was on oxygen.
Why?
Four minutes, breathing by.
Three days.
Three days.
Why?
In one position.
Why?
And you got a wound, you know pressure, you know when you lie on one side, there's, you have sores there. But this young man.
Why?
Also likes to inform me, pastors are okay, then he told me one day, Pastor Kumar was also not feeling well. Is it true?
Why?
So what did we do back home in my, in our church? We began praying for Pastor Kumar.
Why?
For this man. Here.
Why?
Some of you. Are very sick. Some of you.
Why?
Have big problems.
Why?
Some of you.
Why?
You don't know why you sleep tonight. But you still come to church. Why? You still come? God healed him is here. God healed our pastor is here. Because when God still has wait for you, the devil cannot take you. Hallelujah. Now, the question is.
Why?
We are worshiping you, the true God. When we look in the world.
Why?
Sinners.
Why?
Don't suffer alone. Huh?
Why?
Crooks, evil people. The devil blesses them. Hallelujah.
Hallelujah.
I want you to understand why.
Why?
God has a reason for allowing you to suffer for a season. They are very good. A church.
Why?
Listen, what?
Why?
A church that is not suffering. Are you a church here?
Why?
A church is a gathering of believers. Are you a church? The way you suffer as an individual, even a church must suffer. The prophet says.
Why?
A church.
Why?
That is not suffering. That is not being tried. It is not of God. So the way you are insulted.
Why?
The way you can be persecuted. The way you can be called by the names. That's how you know a true church. A true church.
Why?
Will receive more insults. From where?
Why?
Not from the world.
Why?
But from other churches. I'm quoting the prophet.
Why?
A church.
Why?
I made the statement, I think in a ganti. In our country.
Why?
I like mangoes, by the way.
Why?
When you want to know a tree that has sweet mangoes. Don't look at the mango, the, the. You have no revelation. Look down.
Why?
Look at all the trees. Which mango tree.
Why?
Has many stones thrown at it. How can you know the number of stones?
Why?
Stones don't stay on the leaves, they, they come down. Just look where are most stonesy.
Why?
How do you know a servant of God who is standing with the weight? Watch the one who receives more. Ahah, now you are seeing it. No, our church.
Why?
The whole India praises it. Did all the Jews praise Jesus? Open your eyes. A church.
Why?
That is not suffering. That is not tried. It is not of God. Anything.
Why?
That is of God.
Why?
The devil fights it day and night.
Why?
I can see some believers saying, yeah, yeah, yeah. No, wait.
Why?
I'm coming to the reason.
Why?
Can I ask you a question?
Why?
When this church is being insulted. When the pastors are being insulted.
Why?
When your pastors are being insulted.
Why?
When you are very sick.
Why?
When you have no money.
Why?
Does God see you suffering? The answer is. In fact.
Why?
When you are suffering.
Why? niyuv himsichabartunappudu shodanlo nu veltunappudu
when you are being persecuted
ipudeite nu himsichabartu unnavu
by the devil
a dayam chata himsichabartunappudu
when you are being troubled
samashalunu kurukupoinappudu
god is near you
devu yekkaroleedo ni pakkana dagaregane unnaadu
hallelujah
chaptan gattiga hallelujah
how many have read brother Job Job Job?
yoobukasamo yanta mandichadivarendikkada?
have you read Job?
eprenay yoobukandam chadivama manamo
I I would just speak but go and read
intikelin taravachadvandadajes
maybe I can read it is it okay?
chadavantara yes sir chodandi
Job chapter one
yoobukandamo
no
outa adhyayamo
I'm stopping going to church too much trouble
ledho ledho chala samashaluchesa ibanduluchesa lakavati nen sangani veldamanaesanantara?
I'm going back to my denomination
na ayaka a patha sangasaka keterigavelpotano ani antaragina
because there are the problems where few
indukante a sangasaka lo mikusamashalani vichala tokugane kantpesayandi
oh wait for me I finish tonight then make a decision
kani dani nirnendiskune muddi raatri ekkuotamayes antavaruku miru edhuchodandi taravata miyaka nirnayan vichcheskondi
I think I'll just pick Job for suffering eh?
nen
alright how many are in Job?
yanta mandi ayaka yoobukandam tisaranikkada yoobukandam oku taadhyayamo
are you in chapter one?
modatyadhyantisaranantara?
yes was was Job a believer?
yoobu okavisvasena?
yes
avunu
okay now I'm reading
ipu chavutunachodandi
Job chapter one verse one
yoobukandamo oku taadhyayamo okutavachinulachodandi
there was a man in the land of Uz whose name was Job and the man was perfect the man was emphasized perfect and upright and one that feared God and hated evil Christian
uzu deshamanando yoobu anukammanushundenu atadu yadardevanturnenu nyayavanturnai devu niyando bhaya bhaktalukaligi chedutanamo visarjinchinavadu
hallelujah
hallelujah
Job
yoobu
did you see a God?
yoobu devu nepatla bhaya bhaktalukaligina vadena?
yes
avunu
was he perfect?
atadu yadardevanturnena?
yes was he upright?
atadu nyayavanturnena?
was he going to church like you?
yes atadu nikulaga nakulaga atadu kodasangani velthu undevada avante avne
then because of that
danubatti
god did this for him
devu atanike emichaduchodandi
verse two
rendova
and there were born unto him seven sons and three daughters
atanike yeduguru kumarunu muguru kumatrunu kaligiri
verse three
mudavachinam
his substance also was seven thousand sheep three thousand camels five hundred yoko foxten five hundred shearses a very great household so that this man was the greatest of all the men of the east
atanike yedu vala gorilunu moodu vala ontelunu aedu vandala chetala yenlunu yetlunu aedu vandala aadugadhalu kaligi bahumandi pannivaru no atanike astiganundenu ganuka turpudikku janulandrelo atade goppavadu ganundenu
everything was okay
atari chutrananta kodabane undi
he had children he had a wife he had money everything was okay
atanike kumarunnaru kumatrunnaru alage sarval lakavate sampadani astanta kodavunay
he used to go to church
atadu kodasangani kentundevadu nikulaga nakulaga
and god blessed him
atani devu divinchadu kodakada
somewhere somewhere someone was not happy
ilanti samayamalo atadu aavidanga unnapudu akkada yavaro okavektisantoshingaleedo
now we come to verse six
ipudu arovachinachodandi
now there was a day when the sons of god came to present themselves before the lord and satan came also among them satan went to that meeting six
chodandi devadutalu yehova sanidrinilichutakai vichina dinamokadi tatastinchenu a dinamuna apavadiyaku vadu varitu kalisi vicheno
hallelujah
hallelujah
seven
yedavachinachodandi
and the lord said unto Satan whence comes thou then satan answered the lord and said from going up and down to and from the earth and so on
yehova niyuv yekkarunudi vichitavani vaninadugaga apavadi bhoomimida ituatu tiruguladucho andilo sanchirichu vichitnani yehova ko pratitramichenu
eight listen
jagataga vinandi
god is giving a testimony about his son Job
devu tana kumarunaina yoobukunchi etuvanti sakshanissunadu jagataga gamaninchane
and god gives a testimony about each one of you tonight in heaven right now
alage i raatri kooda ipudu kooda ikkada kuchina niyukunchi nakukunchi kooda ayana paralokamlo okasakshanissu unna
eight
enivudavachinam
and the lord said unto satan hast thou considered my servant Job that there is none like him in Andhra in Rashmondray in Guyanaway a perfect and an upright man one that fears God and hates evil?
andukuyehova niyuv na savakudana yoobu sangati alochinchitiva atadu yadardevanturnenu nyayavanturnai devu niyando bhaya bhaktalukaligi chedutanamuno visarjinchinavadu bhoomimida atani vanti vadavadu no ledhu
nine listen
tomidavachinachodandi
listen what satan said
sataniamantundachodandi
then satan answered the lord and said doth Job fear God for not ten hast thou not made a boundary around him and about a boundary around his house and about all that he has on every side that was blessed his work of his hands you have blessed his increase the land ah read nine ten
tomidavachinachodam ani adugaga apavadi yoobu urakaya devu niyando bhaya bhakturu kalavada ayana niyuv atanike atani inti varikini atanikini kaligina samashamunukno chutto kanchiveshitivu kada niyuv atani cheti panini divinchuda chata atani asti deshamuloba huga vissarinchu unna
how many have understood?
yanta mandi kartamavutundikkada?
have you understood?
mi kartamayinda
what the devil is saying?
dayam yeman chettunadu mi kartamavutavunda
ah the devil is saying
dayamantavundi
can I write?
raymantare ikkada?
why Job
asaley indukuyehova
goes to church
asaley yoobu sangani kindukvelavalse vastu undi
fears you
asaley indukode devu patla bhaya bhaktalukunadu indukathuro nyayavatragundanadu indukathuro yadardevanturgavundanadasalu
the problem is you god
kachitenga nisenga samashanidi ekkaninchasunante devu niyatturande pundukuntavunna
problem is not Job
kani samashanidi yoobu kathro ledhagani
one
kani akkada samashakani jasunante devu niyatturande vastu indukante jagataga vinandi
you god
devu vana lakavate devu deina ayana
you are put angels around you
miru gamaninchinatlate devu yekkarunadante ayana chutteyavu unarante duhtala nevi ok duhumuka vichchamandi lakavate ok godavale a duhtalu ayani kachtu unay
can you hear what the devil is saying?
dayam yeman tundadelisa ikkada?
you god you are a problem you are put
idigo
now
sataniamantundante yoobulokadu samashya devu deina nu injasa vante atani chuttemesavu okakanchivesavantunadu
the prophet says
a pravaktiamantarante
some believers think
chala mandi viswassule manukutinadante
when the angels of god are around your house or around you
niyuka chutto devu nekka duhtala nevi a chutto nirebadine nikapadunappudu
how is it done?
asalu indukila jirigindi ankunta
the prophet says
pravaktantunadu
how many know tents where are people sleep tents?
which tents?
tents
tents
yeah you know you know people if you are waiting in the bush
yes sir
they put tents they open go and sleep
gudaral yelagatenu okagudarallo yelagatenu baitikelinappudu pranthalokelinappudu gudaralvesukun yelagatenu katukunu untaro alanti iyaka vishamani dimamukasachusunatlate
angels
a duhtalu
put their tents around you one tent here
a duhtalinyasayante ni chutto okagudaramalu stopichukuntai
and this is scripture eh?
idilakane manantara di?
when they built a tabernacle in the wilderness
ipudeite aranyamalo varuka mandiranini nirmincharo
there were four bodyguards
akkada naluguru rakshakabattunar lakavate bodyguards unna
four creatures
a nalugu jivilu
four faces
a nalugu ayaka mukamulu
one looks like a man
okatemo manusuni mukamu vanti di
one looks like a lion
inkokati ayaka simhapu mukamayunadi
one looks like a
inkokati yemayundi nalugu jivilo
and the fourth one
kooda nalugavadi pakshirajaayunadi
then god in the center
apudu devu yekkarunadante ayana majchalo unnaadai
that's that's how he protects you
avidangani ninnu nanu kapadadaayin
angels
ni chutteyavu unarante duhtalu
but wait
kani kani
there was another protection
inkokabadrathu kodavuntundandi
go to disra
devu israrichepada
you are twelve tribes
miru pannenduguru gottralunnamiku
huh?
ismeyna
four tribes
a nalugu gottral
beyond the east
adi yekkarunadante turpovai puna undali
led by judah
varu
three three
sorry sir
three tribes
moodu gottral
east
akkada turpovai puna undali
three tribes
moodu gottralitu
three tribes
moodu gottralu atuvai puna
three tribes
moodu gottralu atuvai puna
so three
ipudu moodu
plus three
plus moodu
plus three
plus moodu
plus three
plus moodu kalipate
equals how many tribes?
innosunay inni gottralosunay
that's how god protects you
avidangani devu ninnu nanu kapadavunnaadain
you as an individual
vektikatanga niyuv nenu
father
okatandriga
mother
taliga
brother
shohodradiga
sister
shohodriga
your children
vi bital
everyone are protected
prati varu kodayekkarunarante badrapachabadi unnaro
now while you are here
ikkada nu kuchina kooda ipudu kooda
because you have come to worship god
miru devu naaradenchilani vichcharukooda lakavati
angels have surrounded your house
ni vikkada kuchina kooda ni chutto a duhtalu samuhamanedi ni chutto prakaramaga unay
how many protections?
yanta mandi yanta mandi badrathagavunna
one around you
okatemo duhtal ayaka nalugu jivila okaprakaramala okabadrathundi
one around your house
alage okatemo ni gruhani kekooda badrathagayichadaayin
because you are here
indukante a intini vichipetenu ikkada vichchari raatri
angels are protecting your house
andike ni intini kodakapadade varante
because you are here
indukante nu ikkada kuchinavu
angels are protecting you where you are
ikkada kuchinavu ninnu kooda devu badrapachivunchadaayin
that's why the devil thought the god
andukavatti ayaka dayamo devu deantavundi
too much protection
idigo chala ekku kanchipetavu a badrathesunchavantunadai
here you protect
ikkada chusunadu no badrath badrathesunavu
whom you protect?
intikadu kodavarki badrathesunavu
remove the bodyguards remove
a sataniamantarante a kancha lakavate badrathokasari teese chudu antunadu
from your house
ni gruhamundi
and from you
alage ninundi kodabadrathatischudu antunadu
now we are reading verse
chodandi ipu chavutunam
eleven
padakonda vachinachodandi
god devil telling god but put forth your hand now touch all that he has and you cast thee to thy face
ayinano niyuv ipudu ni chayi chapi atanike kaligina samashamuno motinadala atadu ni mukami edhutune duushinchhi ninnu vichipavunu ani yehova to anaga
twelve
vanadavachinam
and the lord said unto satan behold all that he has is yours only upon him do not put your hand so satan went ah trouble started
chodandi yehova idigo atanike kaligina samashamuno niyuvashamuna unna di atanike matramu ye haaniyo chayi kodanee apavadi ki selaviyega vadu yehova sanidrinundi bhailu veleno
hallelujah
chaptan gattiga hallelujah
and in one day
okarochilone
Job lost all his children
Ayub Ayub, he was in the battle He lost all his children
All his animals
All his wealth He lost everything
All the money in the bank account gone
The bank was empty, the money, everything was lost
And when God lost everything
When?
So, when Job lost everything
Ayub, he lost everything
Twenty
Twenty
Job said
He lost everything
Then Job arose, rent his mantle, shaved his head, fell down upon the ground, and worshipped, not cried, worshipped, and said, twenty-one, Naked came I out of my mother's womb; naked shall I return; the Lord gave, the Lord has taken away; blessed be the name of the Lord.
He worshiped God He worshiped God He worshiped God He worshiped God You worship God You worship God You worship God You worship God
Hallelujah
Hallelujah
In suffering
Ayub's problems
In pain
Ayub's diseases
In tears
Ayub's diseases
In insults
Ayub's pains
In sickness
Ayub's diseases
Praise God
We worship God
That's what you should do
This is what you should do
People said, eat
You worship God
Children are dead, you say
You worship God
It's God who gave me
You worship God You worship God He gave me
He continued to go to church
You worship God You worship God You worship God You worship God
Second meeting, Satan and God, chapter two
Read it Two gods You worship God
Verse one
Read it now
And there was a day, verse one, chapter two, when the sons of God came to praise themselves to the Lord, and Satan came also among them to praise themselves to the other, too, and the Lord said unto Satan, From whence comest thou, same ones, ah, up and down, and so on, verse, ah, where are we? Three And the Lord said unto Satan, Hast thou considered my servant Job, that there is none like him in the earth, in India, in Andhra, um, a perfect and upright man, one that fears God, hates evil, and still he holds fast to his integrity or Christianity, although you, devil, you moved me against him to destroy him without a cause, he is still worshiping?
Read it Two gods You worship God 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 Why? You worship God 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 You worship God
Hallelujah
Hallelujah
God is telling me, still worshiping me, he hasn't stopped
You worship God You worship God You worship God
No deacons went to look for Job, why don't you come to church?
You worship God You worship God You worship God You worship God
Some of you, if it was like this, you stop worshiping
Many of you worship God
No matter your problem, you troubled, you go through, keep on worshiping God, I'm about to give you a reason, we stop
We worship God We worship God We worship God We worship God
Verse four
Read it now
Do you know what the devil now says?
You worship God
And Satan answered the Lord, and said, Skin for skin, yeah, all that a man has, oh, he give for his life, now, verse five, but put forth your hand now, and touch his bone and his flesh, he will cast thee to thy face. And then let's say, verse six, and say, okay, God is in hand, but don't kill him, six
Read it now You worship God 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 Read it Why? You want to read? Five Read it now Why? You worship God You worship God
Seven
Read it now You worship God You worship God You worship God
Eight
Read it now You worship God You worship God
And brother, if your wife is not a believer, nine, read
Brother You worship God You worship God You worship God You worship God
Hallelujah
Hallelujah
Cast God, my husband, and die
Why? You worship God You worship God
Listen to his answer, read the next verse
Why? You worship God Why? You worship God You worship God You worship God You worship God
I'm about to close now
Read it now
Are you here?
Read it now
What I'll say, I'll tell you somewhere, right?
You worship God
Now
You worship God
Now
Read it now
The devil has touched him
You worship God
And he grew balls from the head to the feet
You worship God You worship God
Do you know, do you know boy was?
Yes, sir Boy
You know that, eh?
You worship God
And the Bible says
Read it now
He took a piece of a pot of clay, and began to
You worship God
And the wife said,
You are stinking, you are smelly, get out of the house You worship God You worship God You worship God
His own wife
His son
Chased him
You worship God
Out of his own house
His son His son
Now, where did Job go?
You worship God
Go and read
You worship God
Did you go to his parents?
You worship God
No
No
Did you go to his mother's relatives?
You worship God
No
No
Job had the revelation
You worship God
Can we read it in verse one?
Read it now
One verse or two there?
Read it now
Ahah, ah, verse four and five
Read it now
Read
Read it now His brothers They were 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 Ayub, his brothers They were 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 Ayub's children
Hallelujah
Hallelujah
Whenever his children went to play, he said, ah, ah, he called them, come back
Why? His brothers They were They were They were
He prayed for them
They were
The Bible says
Read it now
Offer the sacrifice
Read it now They were
Did the Bible say that?
Read it now
You take a sheep, kill it
Read it now
Because he said, maybe they see where they went
Why? His brothers They were They were Ayub, he lost everything
There is a rule in the Old Testament
Read it now
When you offer a lamb for a sacrifice
You worship God You worship God
And it was burnt
Why?
You took the ashes
You worship God
The priest took the ashes
You worship God
Through them somewhere
You worship God
And Job
You worship God
Offered sacrifice was children
Read it now His brothers They were They were
And take their ashes
They were They were
And throw them
You worship God
On the ash heap
Why? You worship God You worship God You worship God
Is it okay?
Read it now
Meaning
You worship God
Meaning
You worship God
Whenever he offered a sacrifice, he only took them at one place
Read it now His brothers His ashes You worship God You worship God
When the wife chased him
His brothers
He never went to his father's house
He went to his friend's house He went to his friend's house
He went where he was sacrificing ashes
Read it now Why? You worship God You worship God You worship God
No matter your problem
Why?
Now, we are taking this to today
This is what you worship God
No matter your problem
Why?
If you are a believer here
You worship God
No matter your problem
Why?
If you are a believer, in Gant, in anywhere, where we went pastors
You worship God You worship God
The Bible says
Read it now
Go and sacrifice
Read it now You worship God
Where God has put his name
Why? You worship God You worship God
Now, you believers here
You worship God
Where has God put his name for you?
Why? You worship God
Okay, can I help you?
You worship God
Can you see where I'm standing?
You worship God
Do you know this?
You know this?
What is this?
You know this?
Popet
Yeah
Popet Do you not say popet?
You worship God
Prophet says
Read it now
The closest place to heaven here is, here, 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 here
You worship God You worship God You worship God
So, what Job was doing
You worship God
Always would go to church and pray
You worship God You worship God
Even when one children were dead
You worship God
He went to church and prayed
You worship God
Why?
You know this?
This is where God comes down, in here, here
Why? You worship God
When the wife chased him
You worship God
Where did he go?
You worship God
By revelation
You worship God
The closest place to heaven
You worship God
Where did he go?
You worship God
Where should you go?
You worship God
You come here
You worship God
Last night
Last night
When we were coming from the pastor's church
Pastor
In my
Vijaywada
No, where I went last night
Yanam
Ah, Yanam
Yanam
I was very surprised
You worship God
And very happy
You worship God
The more I know your pastor, the more I like him
Read it now You worship God You worship God
We were coming
You worship God
It was the brother, let's go to church
You worship God
And he came out here
You worship God
And he said, no
You worship God
They are praying, I've come to join them
You worship God You worship God
Yeah
You worship God
He came here
You worship God
Last, ah, what time was it? Here
Twelve o'clock
We dropped, twelve o'clock, we dropped him off here
Read it now
Why?
You worship God
It's a revelation
You worship God
God
You worship God You worship God
God
You worship God
Is in this church
You worship God
I have a way God shows me things
You worship God
Okay, I won't say this
You worship God Read it now
Some churches, I say, no, 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 I can't come
Read it now Read it now You worship God
Something tells me
You worship God
But here
You worship God
We were, we were here at twelve o'clock, he came inside
Read it now
Is it the pastor? No
Yes, sir
Is it the pastor? No
You worship God
God is here
You worship God
And this The closest place to heaven
You worship God
No matter your problems
You worship God
No matter your funerals
You worship God
No matter your sickness
You worship God
If you have strength
You worship God
Come here
You worship God You worship God
That's what Job did
You worship God
Because he went to the place of worship
You worship God
When you read in Job thirty-eight, when you go home
You worship God
When God came from heaven
You worship God
To talk to Job
You worship God
Do you know where God went?
You worship God
He never went to the house
You worship God
He, God, oh, God also, okay, okay, let me show you
Read it now
You know the answer
Read it now
Thirty-eight
Thirty-eight
Job thirty-eight
Thirty-eight
Then I'll give comments in ten minutes, we stop
Read it now
Thirty-eight, verse one
You can go on, you can go on, we have a time
God
You worship God
Is coming to see his son, who has suffered so much
Read it now You worship God You worship God You worship God
Then God came in a whirlwind
You worship God You worship God
Thirty-eight, one
Thirty-eight
Then the Lord answered Job out of the whirlwind, and said, Who is this that scum? And then he talks to him
Yes, sir
Where did God go in a whirlwind?
Read it now You worship God You worship God
Did he go in the house where his wife was?
You worship God You worship God
Did the whirlwind go in the house?
You worship God
And God said, now, sister Job, go and call him to come, no
You worship God You worship God
When God came in a whirlwind
You worship God
The whirlwind stopped where Job was
You worship God You worship God
Where?
Where?
In the house?
In the house?
No
No
Where?
Where?
Outside
Outside
Where there were ashes?
Where?
Where Job was?
You worship God
Tonight?
Last night
Whatever your problem
You worship God
Don't stay home
You worship God You worship God
Comes in a whirlwind
You worship God
He will meet you here
You worship God
Scripture
Read it now
Hebrews ten twenty-five
Read it now Read it now
Hebrews ten twenty-five, you can read my
Read it now
You can read my brother in Telugu
Read it now
Hebrews ten
Many 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 Many
What does the Bible say?
Read it now
Not forsaking the assembling of ourselves together, this is English, together, as the manner of some is now, you, you are not some
Read it now
Is a, but exhorting one another so much the more as you see the day approaching, come here, assemble here, meet together, don't be like some
Read it now You worship God Chudandi, miru yoganaka, avachinala chustunte, kondaru manuchunnatluga anrayavandidi, ah kondaru manamukadandi, yavarethe manivesunnavaro, varikosamaanam atlatunnavaru, kani manamenchialante, anantunnavaro, samaajamuka kooduta manaka, vokaninokkudu, hetchirinchichu, adinamu samipinchutam miru, chuchina koladi, mariyekkoga, alagu chichu, pramachuputakunu, satkaryamuchichidukunu, vokaninokkudu, purkolpukunavalanani, alochintumoo antunnavai?
Some, some women, some sisters surprised me.
Chalamandi strialu, chalamandi ayaka, ayaka, strialu talalu chalamandi nanu chala achari ankuguri chesar?
Day of worship.
Varu aaradana dinamochinappudu?
They go somewhere?
Varu yakkarakovelto untarantval?
Where did you go?
Yakkarakavatunnavanu?
Ah, our neighbor, they function.
Ma pakvalaki edo function gerutundandi antar?
And you know being neighbors, we must be there.
Kachithinga mem, idu pakko nuttaramga bati, mem tapakakada ondavalseyundhi antarval?
So your neighbor and God, who is number one to you?
Oku prashnadukutanu, ni pakkoedikini, devuniki, machlo ganaka, ni jyutuloteelskojosthe, pradanayatavarkistavunnu?
Can they answer?
Yes, sir.
Who is number one?
Ni jyutalllo pradanudavandhi?
No, the neighbor, the funeral, ah to rush there, I said, church, I'll go tomorrow, oh, I see, so who is number one?
Ipudu yamantarante, pakko rentlo yavachinipoyaru, kabati sangamantu velalante, tarvade pranaveltanle, ipudu matramo, ee samaadikaradikkenavaniki veltanu antunav, aitha sangani machi potunavva?
They said, church here?
Ikademo sanganjerugutavundhi, aaradra jerugutavundhi?
You go somewhere?
Niyakkaravatunav, yakkarakovelto tirugutunav?
What can Job say to you?
Kani, yobu unte ganaka, ni to yenjepunnavaru, yenirpincharu yobanaki?
Can you be like Job?
Yobu vala, manamu kanesam unnatani kistapadavama?
I went, you know, we are good friends with my boss, so the boss called me, there was a new, so your boss and the God, you, oh, I see.
Chudandi, chalamandi yamantarante, ma yajumanudu nakchala closeandi, kabati athado, athanani pilcharu kabati, velakatapatledu, andu kene niyoro chukotanikralenu, aaradanikralenu, anenu chetunavante, ni jyutalllo, niyoka bossukopoda, lakavate ni devu gopavada?
And this is common with some sisters.
Idi, chalamandi strialu lo unnad, okasadarnamaina, samashiga kana padavundhi?
They even tell other sisters in the church, no, let's not go to church, let's go there, there is.
Ilanti stri lenjasarante, valle akkadi pokunda, megata akontamandi strili prayrepinchii, sangammanrepinchii, akkadi lakupotaran?
I have a question for you.
Ikadoko prashnami, miku kosanepadavunna?
When Jesus comes on the day of the rapture.
Yesu Kristo, yatta baato jerigia dinnanna, aynaganaka ochinatlaithe?
Where should we find you?
Aynenu yakkarakalskuntav?
At the neighbors?
Ah pak, yakkaraithe pakkoedikeli vakkarkalskuntava?
Where should we find you?
Asalaini yakkarakalskuntamanu? Yakkaraganukuntadaina?
Now, start writing now.
Andu keraas kodapraytnanche?
The purpose why God allows his children to suffer, now I'm giving the reasons.
Devu tanabeddalaki, ituvanti shodanindukissunnavaro, ipudu chadutunav jagatgaras kodan?
Everything we do, we learn from God himself.
Kachithinga, pratidi mana jyutalllo, nerchkovalsinidena unnadi ante, adi devuniyodanandi matrameni nerchkovali?
Hebrews five eight, now.
Hebrews loka rasnapatrika, ayidavadhyayemu?
Start writing now.
Ayidavadhyam, they chesras kodan, ras kodanik praytnanche?
Hebrews five eight, can I read?
Hebrews loka rasnapatrika, ayidavadhyam, enivadochinachudamantara?
Can I read?
Chapta rekattika?
Have you found Hebrews chapter five verse eight?
Andaru kuda Hebrews loka rasnapatrika, ayidavadhyam, tisara?
These are the benefits that we get when you go through suffering and continue worshipping.
Chudandi, miru manaka, ayaka, aaradalu manaka, devuni sudinchidam manaka, ashodanalu kunda, ni jyutallaku veltinappudu, velto veltinasaamimulo, devu yala aashravadestado, ikkada manam chodubothuvunna?
The Bible says verse eight, Hebrews five eight. Though he were a son, yet learned he obedience by the things which he suffered.
Aynaa, kumaruda yundi, tanupundinasramalavalana, vidayatanunechikunenu?
Nine, and, and being made perfect, he became the author of eternal salvation and to all them that obey him.
Mariu, aynaa, sampoona sidhi, pundinavade, melki sediki yoka kravamulo cherina, pradanayajukudani, devuni chata pilovadi, tanaku vidayenavarandrikini, nitya rakshana ko karukudaayeno?
Who is the Bible referring to in verse eight?
Asalu yenivadovochina prakaramga, yav, Bible lo, yavani, adarshingadiskutunadaina?
Jesus Christ.
Aynae Yesu Kristo kosamichetunav?
The Bible says verse eight.
Yenivadochinab Bible chettavundichudan?
Though he were a son.
Aynaa, kumaruda yundi kuda?
Yet learned he obedience by the things which he suffered.
Tanupundina, shramalavalana, vidayatanunechikunenu antunnavai?
So obedience?
Andu kevidayatanedi?
You can only become obedient to God when you pass through suffering.
Chudandi, miru gamaninchinatlaithe, yippudaithe aashramalu kunda, potu untunavamo, yippudaithe aashramalu mana jyutalllo ochinappudu, mana lo keemosundante, vidayatanedi vosundhi, a vidayata, manamu, yakkaradeskalundante, devuniyoddeki mana lecharestavundhi?
You have an example of Job.
Miku kavalante, okamadirevarunnavante, yobu mariki kanpisavunna?
Hallelujah?
Chapta rekattika, hallelujah?
When you are suffering.
Miru, ayaka?
Problem?
Shramalu pundukutunappudu?
You keep on worshipping.
Yippandalu padutunagaani, nuu kravamutappukunda, devu aaradissune unntunte?
God is teaching you what?
Aashramalu nikyentaithe vosunayo, devu nikyemnerpisunadantundikada, vidayatranerpisunadaina?
Amen.
Amen antara?
Is that clear?
Arthamavutunavmanaki?
You don't learn obedience in school.
Ee vidayata, manaki school lo gaani, patashal lo manaki nerpincharan?
James, chapter one verse two.
Chudandi, yakoburasnapatrika, okutadhyayemu, rendavochinlo chudandi?
You will never find a college where they teach obedience, never.
Ee yakkarakoda, ee college lo, ee vidayata kosamikpataal nerpinchepadavandi?
James one two says.
Yoburasnapatrika, okutadhyayam, rendavochinlainantunnavado?
We read it, my brethren count, count it all joy when you fall into diverse temptations.
Na sohadra ra, mi viswasmunaku kaluku pariksha, orpuno putinchinani erigi, miru naanavidamala shodanlo padunappudu, adi mahaa anandamani inchukunadi?
Three, knowing this, that the trying of your faith works patience.
Chudandi, mi viswasmunaku kaluku pariksha, orpuno putinchinani erigi antunnavai?
Hallelujah?
Hallelujah?
How do you learn obedience? I go in the Bible.
Bible prakaranaga, vidayatranama lenchukutunavandhi?
Jesus learned obedience by the things he suffered.
Yesu Kristo kuda, tanupundinasramalavalana, anenchukunadante, vidayatranenechukunad?
James says.
Ikka, yakobantunnavado?
When your faith is tried in suffering, you learn patience.
Na viswasmunaku kaluku pariksha, na keemnerpinchinante, orpuno putinchindi antunnavai?
Romans eight?
Chudandi, Romi loka rasnapatrika, enivadovadhyayemu?
Me, I want to learn patience, there is no school for patience, it's suffering, that's it.
Ledu ya, nenu iyoka, shramalni anubinchitaniki, nenu school kvaltanante, adi lenelledu, shramal anubinchinappude, manamu vidayatranepundukuntunav?
Romans eight?
Romi loka rasnapatrika, enivadovadhyayemu?
And we read verse, whirlwind, seventeen and eighteen.
Padhihedu, mariu padhimdivochinachudukundachudandi?
Pay attention.
Jagatka ventunara?
And if children, then hears, hears of God, and join ears with Christ, if so be that we suffer with him, that we may also be glorified together, I come to verse eighteen? For I reckon that the sufferings of this present time are not worthy to be compared with the glory which shall be revealed in us.
Manamu, pillalamaithe, varasulamu, anaga, devuni varasulamu, Kristo tokuda, mahima pondutaku, ayanatoshamapadineyedala, Kristo todhi varasulamu, manayedala, prateksyamu kaavu, mahima eduta, ippati kalapushramalu, yannatakinavikkavani, inchuchunnavano?
Do you know what happened to Job?
Asalu yobukeenjerigindu miku gurtunav?
After suffering?
Ayaka shramalu pundukunatarvata?
He again had German children?
Athariki, entamandi pillalaputtarande?
How many children?
Entamandi pillalaputtaratarvata?
They came back.
Tarvata, a bital devu tirigichadantara, padhimandri tirigichad?
How many animals?
Entamandi?
How many come out?
Yenni jantulati tirigichadaina?
Times two.
Aynaa, rendanteluka, aashravadichitirigichadai?
But children?
Kani, bital matra?
Still more ten, why?
Inkano padichad, enukadelsa?
The number you have, here of your children is the number you have in glory.
Miru gamaninchinatlaithe, ikkara esanketamiru kaligavuntaro, mahimalo, adesankenamiru kaligavuntaro?
And became more famous.
Ala, ala miru, rakyaadiganchinappudu?
He had more riches.
Athadiki, chala ekku, asti inkasampadinchukunad?
Let's go to Job forty.
Chudandi, yobugrandamuu, narpay, ochinani manavaldan chudandi, adhyayani ki?
See the benefits of suffering.
Athadu yala, a badalu to, tirigia aashravadanepundukunadachudam?
Hallelujah?
Hallelujah?
Are we in Job?
Mirandaru yobugrandantisara?
Are you in Job?
Hallelujah?
Okay, chapter forty-two?
Nalapay, rendavadhyayemu?
Verse ten.
Padavavochinani chodam?
Hallelujah?
Hallelujah?
And the Lord turned the captivity of Job when he prayed for his friends, also the Lord, God gave Job twice as much as he had before, read it.
Mariu yobo, tanasnehitra nimittamu pradhana chesinappudu, yohova, athani, shiyamasstithini, marala athaniki dayechesenu, mariu, yobunako purumukaliginadani kante, rendantalu adikamuga, yohova athaniki dayechesenu?
Twelve.
Panadavochinu?
Jump to twelve.
Panadavochinu?
So the Lord blessed the latter or later end of Job more than his beginning, for he had fourteen thousand sheep, six and so on, thirteen, also he had seven cent three daughters. Hallelujah?
Hallelujah? Yohova, yobunu modata aashrodinchinadani kante, mari adikamuga aashrodinchenu, athaniki, patnalgu vela gorulenu, aru vela ontelenu, veeyijatala yedla, yedlanu, veeyi, aadi garudalenu, kaligenu, mariu, athaniki, yedugu kumarulenu, mugu kumartelenu, kaligiri?
Did you hear?
Arthamavutunav, vinapadunavmanaki?
Oh, the riches were at times.
Nisanga, ayaka, astanta kuda nenjessantante, rendanteluka ina aashrodinchitirigichad?
Did the Bible say that?
Mana Bible alage chettavunda?
Why?
Enukadelsa?
He suffered.
Athadu shramapaddadu kanaika?
Why?
Enukadelsa?
He kept on worshipping.
Athadu manaka aaradana chesu unnadu kanaika?
Then when he was tested?
Yippudaithe parikshinchipaddadu?
Proved?
Yippudaithe ruzuchevaddadu?
God multiplied this.
Devu nenjessunadante, tanaparisthitinandatini kuda, rendanteluka aashrodinchidivinchadaina?
How many ones they are blessing to be multiplied?
Ee rojikakochinavarkyentamandiki, miyoka asti gaani, mi aashravadalurrendanteluka divinchapadunaventamandikoorkutunavrikada?
How many ones they are blessing to be multiplied, multiplied, multiplied?
Entamandi aashravadalurrendanteluka devu namaldivinchalani korukutunnavaro?
Accept the suffering.
Aitha, manamenchialante, devu chche ayaka shramalani, anubavinchitaniki, manamu angikarinchari?
You are going through?
Appudu nuu, pondutunai shramalani kuda?
It is for a purpose?
Daani venakala, okavudeshaniddevu kaligavunnavaro?
And God will bless you double.
Tapakka, ee shramalatarvata, devu nenurrendantalu aashravadamuto nimpa botunnavai?
One more benefit of suffering.
Inkoka, ee shramaladvara, inkoka, manaki, ayaka, manchi, labamu kuda undandi?
You cannot be a church leader without suffering.
Nisanga, shramalu lekunda, okasangana yukuduga, vyavharinchidamu chala custom antunnavi pravakta?
Yes, sir.
Huh?
Hallelujah?
Have you caught that?
Arthamayinavamata?
Reason?
Daani ki karname?
Because?
Enthu gantte?
Unless we suffer with Jesus.
Yesu Kristo to, manamu kuda shramapadinatlugane?
We cannot reign with him, we have read in Romans.
Manamu Romi loka rasnapatrikalachadivinatluga, aynalekunda, ayaka shramalni manamu, anubavinchalani antunnavai?
You have to suffer.
Miru, aashramalni anubavinchali?
In order to reign with Jesus.
Yala ante, Kristo tokuda jatakatti, aashramalni miru anubavinchali?
Why?
Enukadelsa?
Because?
Enthu gantte?
Pay attention.
Jagatka ventunara?
Godly character?
Thayvikamayna gunalakshinamala nevi?
Godly character?
Thayvikagunalakshinamalu?
Did you, did you understand?
Arthamavutunavmanaki?
Not Satan character?
Satan gunalakshinagadandi?
But the character of who? God.
Yavari gunalakshinamo? Devuni gunalakshinam?
Character of Jesus.
Yesu Kristo yaka gunalakshinamo?
Because?
Enthu gantte?
All leaders?
Daanenavatte?
In the church?
Ayaka sangamalo?
Deacons?
Ayaka sangapadhalu?
Trustees?
Trustee lu?
Pastors?
Pastor lu?
You must have the character of Jesus.
Manandari ki, yavundalante, Yesu Kristo yaka gunalakshinale, mana lo tokuda kaligavundali?
Now, how did Jesus get that character of God?
Asalu, devu, anavadutunavatatvani, devu, a gunalakshinale, asalu yakkaranundi pondukunnavai?
Because of suffering.
Ayaka shramalavalani, a tatvani, a gunamalu, aynapondukunnavado?
Forty days in the wilderness?
Aranimalu, nalapay dinalu, athadu shramalu pondutunappudu?
He was insulted?
Athadu hymnsinchapadinappudu?
Say amen if it's true?
Arthamayitamenchettara?
Did they insult Jesus?
Yesu Kristi hymnsincharantara vallo?
Did they beat him?
Yesu nikottiara?
Did they pull his beard out?
Aynagattam periki vesara ledha?
Did they stab him?
Aynikotti, aynamothara ledha?
But what did he say?
Kanainanaymancheppadu?
Before he died?
Aynachenipoyamunnevannad?
Father?
Kandri?
Forgive them, they don't know what they are doing.
Virame chichinnavaro, yerugaruganaika, virani sheminchinaina?
When he died?
Yippudaithe nachenipoyaru?
When he rose again?
Aynatirigilechina tarvata?
We will reign with him there.
Nisanga, aynaya yakkarigaithe veladu, ades salaaniki, manamu kuda velabothuvunnavamo?
Save in the church?
Ades sangamalo kuda ochinappudu?
In order to save God?
Yala gaithe manamu devuni sevinshunnavamo?
Must have the character Jesus had.
Sevinchavari lo, yavundalante, devuniyaka gunalakshinalu kaligie, manamu devuni sevinchali?
Now, how do you get that character he had?
Asalu, ituvanti katinamaina paristhitlo, devuni gunalakshinalu manamu yala kaligavuntamo?
Godly character is made by suffering.
Thayvikamayna gunalakshinala nevi, yala tyarchebadayante, shramaladvara, abivanni manamu pondukuntunav?
I've shown you Job, I've shown you Jesus.
Avanni kuda?
Why?
Yogulochupinchanu, Yesu Kristo?
Because?
Enthu gantte?
Character is a victory and not a gift.
Nisanga, gunalakshinamanedi, okavaramukadu, gunalakshinamanedi, okavijyamayunnadi?
No one can say to you, new here, I'll pray, you have character like God, no, 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 no?
Yavaru kuda, nuu ikkara kochi makrencho, nikugunalakshinale, ovadani kidenen pradhastaran, yavarchappaleren?
That's why?
Andu kae?
A preacher?
Okaprasengikudu?
A deacon?
Okasangapada?
A trustee?
Okatrustee?
Without the character of God is not fit to be in that office.
Nisanga, aranti varavaina gaani, ayaka sangapadde gaanivandi, pastor ekaanivandi, dekan ekaanivandi, trustee ekaanivandi, yavareina gaani, devuni gunalakshinam leni, a tuvanti vakti yavareina kuda, ayaka sthananiki, yogidukkado?
You know if a deacon has no God the character, what is going to do?
Nisanga, thayvikamayna gunalakshinangaani, dekanaki lakavate, deedenjassodadelsa?
He will beat you, he says?
Aynanenu kordadu kuda kavalante?
Because he has no God the character.
Enthu gantte, athaloyenledu, thayvikamayna?
You come and say, you come and, you?
Adrochimantantante?
Last year I warned you.
Nenu, nenu, poynavamachinchan? Nenu, poynavamachinchan?
What's wrong with you? Get out!
Baidipoh, antarval?
Should a church leader be like that?
Okasangana yukudu, yippudaina, ala onnedam manchidantara?
So what changes them?
A, athani marchedi, emitu mari?
Not a school?
Okaschool kada athani marchedi?
Through suffering?
Ee shramalagunda athadu veltinappude?
Like Jesus suffered?
Yesu yala gaithe shramaladvara inamundikilaidu?
Like Jesus received the godly character?
Yesu Kristo, thayvikamayna gunalakshinalu yala gaithe kaligavunnavaro, pondukunnavado?
They will also receive God the character.
A tuvanti vidanga, shramalagunda velinappude, vallo kuda, thayvikamayna gunalakshinalu kaligavuntaro?
Look at preachers.
Ee rojuprasengikunachudandi?
To start a church is very hard.
Nisanga, mirchusunatlaithe, okasangani stappinchidamaneedi, chala katinamaina panandi?
He has to go there, he has to go there, he has to do this, and some of you are very difficult.
Nisanga, a pastor injialante, aynakkarakivalali, ikkara kuda inachuskavali, ikkara kuda inachuskavali, alanti paristhitlo, milo chalamandi kuda, chala yippandikaranaga vyavarisuvunnav?
But the character of God, the servant of God who keep you, who keep?
Kani, aynappadiki, anta yippandakaringanu unnakuda, thayvikamayna gunalakshinalu, a sangakapallo unnai kabati, ninu nanu inkana nenjessunante, daggerega chetchkuntunnavado?
Hallelujah?
Hallelujah?
Huh?
Unnavai ikkada?
Godly character?
Thayvikamayna gunalakshinamalu?
Is fit to rule.
Ayaka thayvikamayna gunalakshinamalu kaligavunnavare, prabuthvani chedaniki, yeluvaadu chedaniki, yogulayuntaro?
To be a deacon?
Athadu sangapaddeka undagaladu? Okatrustiga undagaladu? Oka trusteega undegaladu
They need godly character
Varu ala unnalante variki yengavalante mundu thayivikamena guna lakshinali kavali
One more comment
Inkoma madichetunna sotharpanangarin cheparachoodandi
Power
Shaktinedi
Look at any leader
Oh, ye naykunena choodandi
Power without character is, he says, satanic
Nisanga guna lakshinalu leni ayaka naykatthama nedi yedaina kuda adi satanuku chendinade antunad pravakta
But power with character like Jesus
Kani etu wanti shakti yesu kristu kaligunnaado atu wanti shaktiganaka
Is godly
Adi unnatleite adi devunday untundi
This man, if you ask them
Ee manushuni ilakavadaayin miraadiyatleite
What they have suffered?
Varu yanta shramapaddaro miru ganika adiki teriskunte
Ah, you can cry
Miru kavalante meko kanni lukuda ravach
What have gone through?
Varu etu wanti shramalagunda velararo
Is it true pastor?
Nisame nantara saavukalara nisame na
When you are sitting like this
Ilam miru kuchinunndaga
You think it's easy?
Miru kuchadon chaala meko manchiganan pestadi baavutundi
I was in Zimbabwe one time
Oka rochunne Zimbabwe deshunvelnapudu
I was talking to the pastor
A pastorgartho nenamatladavunna
And one brother came to the pastor
Oka sohadra de pastorgarthago chad
Pastor?
Pastorgaro
You told me to be a deacon
Nanno dekanega unnaman chepar mir
Over that small group of five, how many?
Yantamandhi a sanganunnaaro yantamandhi ayyadugu ru matramasanganunna
I've tried to help them, they are a problem, no, I'm coming back, I say no
Nisanga ayyadugu ru nasangani ke atadu atadintate dekanega pastorgarthani pettar atro chantunada ayah ee ayyadugu ru medanu dekanega pettaru aina kuda nanu chaala ibbandi badtunnavelo neninkasangapadega unna no anuchad
How many people troubled him?
Yantamandhi badtunna inni
How many?
Yantamandhi
He's telling, he's telling the pastor I have
Ayyadugu ruke evan tundado pastorgarthago chit pastorgaro naaki chaala ibbandi ipotunna nanna
You, you are used to
Ibandhalani kuda meko sarva sadarname naaku panchi evan chittunad
And the brother was the boss in a bank
A sohadra do oka banklo bosska pandeshivadi
I said the prince is God
Neenanam denust
He realized
Atadu kanesam
Even if by the people
A ayyadugu ru kuda kanesamo
To lead them
Vanen nadipinchunmanedi
You need godly what?
Ayyadugu ne nadipinchalanakuda mariki yengavali devuniyaka guna lakshinalu kavali
How many are you here?
Ikka yantamandhi unnaarani ikkada mari
One?
Vakkala
Five?
Ayyadugu ra
Ah?
Is sangalo
Ah?
Chappali Two thousand
Now, if a brother in Zimbabwe resigned over how many?
Choodandi Zimbabwe deshamalo ayyadugu ru sangalo una a dekanagare resignyajaste
Because this one, I, I, that time, this one, this sister, I told her, "No, no, 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 I said me, I fear God, let's go to your pastor, pastor, there are one, two, three, four, five, I hand them back to you"
Adro nijasivandante adro evan chetunandante ayah ee sohadra la chesindi ee sohadra la chesinadu ee mila chesindi amala chesinani okokoro okdi rendu mudunalu ayyadugu lakpetti ee ayyadugu ru meke apgu keshnal pastorga napki chesad
But in the bank is the what?
Kani banklo atadu ye kartavangalunadu
Boss
Boss, boss ka untnad
The character to be a boss in the bank and the character to lead the ghost to be a different
Miru gamanichinatleite oka banklo yajamanooga undatama nedi oka guna lakshinamavusramayuntundi kani devuni sangamalo undataniki devuni guna lakshinalavusramayuntunna
No wonder they go through what they go through
Endugante varu etu wanti shramalagunda varu velararo prayana mayaro vallo a shramalalo vallo yepudu kuda palu bagosulu kadu ga bati dhanivari guttenchalero
I wish that brother was here, I would say, "Brother, how many? Can you just count?"
A sohadra de ganiki sangalo unte bondevan kunna nipulakpetta jepavadi
Remember
Nyapu munchkondi
God does a reason why you suffer
Asalu manamo shramalipundukuntunamantadaanivankala devudu oka udeshanikali gunna
Is to make you
Atadu devudu yenduka ishamlistunani ko
Have patience
Ni ko sahana ni orpunevadani kisunadu
Be perfect
Ninno pari purnuga teechidatana kisunadain
Be strong in the message
Vartamamalo ninno balavantuduga chedanik shramlistunadain
So when you are suffering
Aite miru shramalupundukuntunnapudu
Don't complain
Miru firiyadu chaykodika
Don't stop worshiping
Devu naradinchidama apakodu
You end up like Job being what? Happy
Niyaka mugimpanedi yala unnalante yobu yala gayte ananda gaanamu chesi devuni mahima parshi aina gadipadu manamo kuda adevidanga chivinchali Devu mevaldivinchunaga Devu nekmaimakalgunaga Devu manasangani kavusarmava Vartamamavichada Ichada rendi Prastu manasangoyu kondishni de Chaalamandhi shramallo shodanallo unnar Rattena Akcharala devudu Manaki yedavusarmo ma chachila shramallo vendandi Chaalamandhi ke rogalu Yadalu unnayanti chappandani chappalidani ke Karikizhunna manavusarmayirginade devudu Edi manasantoshinchay samayme tapa Dukkabadi bada bade samiyam kadu Asalu avilaya konda manaki devuni guna lakshinalay raavan cheptha unnar Karikishamallo padunappudu mahanaanandanga inskavalaata Yobeenjasaadu shramallo padinappudu Tanakunnavani pogutkunappudu Devu meeda complaint chaleedigani atadu devuni aaradinchadu Devu nekshotramkalgunaga Kabat sanakani kalidam manleedu Devu naradinchidam manleedu Chusarandi kabat ishamalu lekonda manamo yedu chayalan matra aashpadatleedu Kachitinka shramalu manaki anto ashiravadakaranga unnay Devu ne guna lakshinala manaki navadaniki Sareena Endugante adhe guru tu devu manato unnadani Shramalu leni varu tu devu leedandi Yavaru shramalaminsatleedu atlanti valuto devu leedandi Yavarete shramalapadutunaru varu toni devu unnadu A samiyallo devu ne varu pakshana pakka nela badutha unnadu Devu nekmaimakalgunaga Hallelujah Ni chuttu dhotal leerin adukodo Nu vantara dana vantaravado kadu Hallelujah Chaalamandhi ellalaki thalaalamay thalaamastha untar Karani mi illanakaapadi devarantara A thalaal kadu dhotal kaapadthanaru Devu nekmaimakalgunaga Kabat ipilara devu yantasadisukunna manabatti Managurinchandasadundani chusara Entika apatisukunna devu nandike ne manamo aaradinchali Yobu manago chakkadu daharaga unnadu Yesu prabhalantode kachitinka anis shramalupadayin jesaadu Shodanla dhvara shramaladvara ne vidhetaretsukunna Karika yobu shramalapadadu bainkaranga himsichabadadu aite prilara chavalo chusunabadhana paristhiti Orindantala divinchabadthan Piyasodallara shramalu anandame santoshame tapa dukkamu kadu Hallelujah Vaakyalani chadiveri kada Kumarlu matramasikshamsamadthanaru Durbhi chilavaru sikshamsavadakla Aina bittalo matramasikshamsamadthanaru Endugante devu ninno nanno tyarjastanadu Devu aina guna lakshinalo kamaalamadusunadu Endugante character ne devuka vijyame tapa adi bahuaranga yavari chedika dandi Character manapundukuntene vijyam manakostudupilara Karika adikharavundu chaalamandhi gani taginat wanti guna lakshinalu Chaalamandhi kilev Karika adi guna lakshinalen adikharav sakachitinka deyimani prochepadu Satananjepadu kabat ee samiyamalo nisanga shramallo unnamano Yadalu to bada badthanamano Ibandhalo unnamano devu nekshotram Yedamasa santoshiddama Chusara devuni kalisukunisthalame ikkada Hallelujah Allain kalvadupadina neekamandhi na piyasohadalu Chachi garakonda adivarun kuda Avusarmaytilanti karikramal jargedupudu allain patkunayudustunnavalu Devu reenjepdada ventunara Neenantakalam gola bedthananikaade devu nee parne nee gola anta karaktera Ani devu nekharudujesadu Devu nekshotramkalugak Aina sunni dikkada undi Ee pulpitay devuniyaka mahima kodaggeriga unnadi Ikka rochiprathanachada mandike ne yavareena kasthalo unte Rochipalipadunagara roju prathanjeskon Mandiranakochiprathunchadong gopakariyamadi Devu neenikalisukunisthalameedi Devu nekshotramkalugaga Allain dispakarabadandu mandiranakaravadun nitskondi Pilara susara adivarunchachi maravalu kuda Chakkadi chempadabakodhatika devu matladadu Yavaru neekmu kya Ni bandhul mu kya ma devu mu kya ma Yavaru neeku pradana sthanamistav Rattena Yenini chepuniva nakopudu Aite devu reenjasaadu Mi kaapar jepade karaktaani Rindosaradan devu anakonfamjastavunnadu Kabat ishamaba Iti devu neenidivinchay samiyamostavunde Andukeye devu neenu a dinaddinam dinaddinam Shuparun jesto pari purnun jesto Nidhiskalta unnadu Lowbadhamaa Seshakestabadhamaa Shodanla sahinchukadhamaa Dhairigamundusagadhamaa God besu devu mulandari divinchunaga Parichakkadu vaakinjepina Jan gomagarkenahruvi porkumavandhalu Chakkadu tajma jesina twenty shodanadu Tezak kuda vandhalal tilujesuna Really brother, this is the This is the right thing now The same situation in the church Many are in the trials today That is why God spoke God bless you brother, thank you Devu nekshotramkalugak Devu yaadoman chappale mundugu sagaman jepad Ye paristhitna mandiram manakodu Adivar varadana manakodu Chachi kandutunevunnaali prathanjastunevunnaali Allain levintunvalandar tiliskondi vishani Ikko unnava landar grahincharanukuntanane no God bless you devu mulidivinchunaga Andhalechnalubadi Devu nekshutistupilara Edi santoshinchay samayame Ni vayadu chibada badthanasantoshichu Yobuki asti boindi Sareena Yobu gasti boindi Aroki boindi Poru manakrenditlo yedu hotundi Devu nekshotram Yobu kadiyiladu Idi yadu Keavalu sandha badiyavachiparaavatal kantundi Yantagora manaparisthit kani Venlipamanna kuda Atadu kuchunisthalamakutundi Antavarikatara jesina vekti Athani bailipatu athani kaapadthanandi Devu nekmaimakalgunaga Ni devu neenanduvidichibadu Ni vekkada unnani chuttu dhotaliyoka O campani chuttu undi Dhotaliyoka surrounding lakad devu dhotaliyoka Kaapudala badradanikundi Much more than the provostidama Ni chochi achod chaddamatlala palikina prudanyalu Shutinchanandichandi Shramalochinappudu danjalu Brazil me malhi himsichinappudu danjalu Meeme chaddamatla paliki meepai Duspar saran jastanappudu Miru danjalu Opkundara Yantmag opkundar danji Ninnipogudite danjata kadu Ayio janalu me mulipogunnapudu Meekusshrama annadu Janalu pakattu manukor godu Ashiravadanukor konda Varu pittharame malasirvada Varu malvemarshinchaname asirvada Leenipur chaddamatlala manameyadu veedamemalakasirvada Danabad provostidama Glory to Lord, hallelujah Andhalekoda provostistu Prabha devu meetho matladada Yantamandha matladadu devu roju Devu meetho matladadu annavalu landar devu nekshutinchan Mirandar devu nekshutichikarapadusonandi Hallelujah Noridir chakshutinchandi aaradinchandi Andhalekoda provosticharadhanachada Glory to Lord, hallelujah Hallelujah praise you Lord, hallelujah 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 Praise the Lord, hallelujah, hallelujah Thank you Jesus Nekshotramunain Anukshanamu ninne Anukshanamu ninne kuluthu punaruthaanooda Anukshanamu ninne kuluthu punaruthaanooda Anukshanamu ninne Anukshanamu ninne kuluthu punaruthaanooda Anukshanamu ninne kuluthu punaruthaanooda Kadgamaina
Yesaya
Anukshanamu ninne Anukshanamu ninne kuluthu punaruthaanooda Anukshanamu ninne kuluthu punaruthaanooda Tahamu gunnave Tahamu gunnave Anukshanamu ninne Anukshanamu ninne kuluthu punaruthaanooda Anukshanamu ninne kuluthu punaruthaanooda Raavu unavaina Raavu unavaina Unnavaina
Hore
Jivamaina
Yesaya Ohunbu
Anukshanamu ninne Anukshanamu ninne kuluthu punaruthaanooda Anukshanamu ninne kuluthu punaruthaanooda Kanti neerutudichave Kanti neerutudichave Kanti papanani Kanti papanani Mantinairanannu nee Mantinairanannu nee Anukshanamu ninne Anukshanamu ninne kuluthu punaruthaanooda Anukshanamu ninne kuluthu punaruthaanooda Anukshanamu ninne Anukshanamu ninne kuluthu punaruthaanooda Anukshanamu ninne kuluthu punaruthaanooda Hallelujah Yemi chadigina prabunistidama Pilara mari innishamalochina Aaradana manadu Devu nekshutinchadama manadu Ganaparchadama manadu Devu neetonevunnaadu Nitsosanadu patichkonthanadu Devu malidivinchunaga Glory to Lord Chapgalra iroja mata Oh yemi chadigina Nak nisanga ne shodanlo unnay Nak nisanga ne shramalonnay Nak nisanga ne kasthalonnay Himsichabadthanadu Anekulandu doshestunararu Chaalamandhalabadtha unnadu Aina putige ne devu nee premishta Aina mandiranakani ne mananu Aine aaradissunevunthanu Annavalu yavareena unnara Aladu tirmanamuntama devutalki Aladu tirmanamunti mekudiche faike tipilara Prabhu kichappandamaata God bless you, hallelujah Devu nichengam me mulidivinchay ashirvadistanaga Devu nichengam me mulabalapadichunaga Mi ratmye jivitho mi visvasa prayaanu Antagantagantagantaki inkamunduke sagaraga Shattru vedi ponaaga Varu sikku parushabadaduaga Oh gopathandri, hallelujah Isamyal mari manasohadra de pastorgaru bomban inchochinatundi Shalimgaru chiprathanchelun korthavanna Prathancheskundam Mahaganuda sarva shaktimanduda Parishudduda prabha Yesu Kristu deva Mikustutalu stotramalu chelistunam prabha Is sahinkalam deva ni dawson nelbedkuni deva Naato ma andarato mir matladanandu kustotral prabha Nisame deva Ikadavardinalo prabha Ma stithini ma gu chupistu unnav prabha